2007. It's now a little after 5:30 PM as we do all meetings. We'll start with invocation by John, followed by the flags, by allegiance to the flag of the US and Texas.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you this day for our freedom that we have received at a cost. And Lord, I pray that tonight your blessings will be upon the commissioners as they represent each of us. And Lord, you've called them to these positions, and I just pray you'd give them wisdom and knowledge and discernment in leading our county. I thank you for each of them and pray your protection upon them and their families. Father, we ask your protection upon people who are traveling in this bad weather that's near us, and we pray, Father, for wisdom in our travel. And Father, we thank you for our country. We do pray for our president and our leaders. And Father, may everything we do be pleasing in your sight. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to ask our district clerk to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Puerto Rico, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation under God.
Under God, one and indivisible. In an improved version.
New and improved. When they went to the ones. He added, "Under God."
I had a different proposal.
Yeah. We have numerous public comments, and I would like to ask that if the public comment, I'm going to give you all the option, if the public comment relates to a specific agenda item, you have the choice of speaking now or waiting for that agenda item to come up, and you can address it at that moment in time. So whatever it is, okay? We'll start off with Rosie Cabazos. Rosie? Is that on the agenda?
Good afternoon, Honorable Judge in Commissioner's Court. My name is Rosie Cabazos, and I am a citizen, a community citizen from Cameron County. I am here representing South Texas Healthcare System as a board member. I listened to your Commissioner's Court meeting last week and stayed up to 1:32, listened to it, and I heard about the indigent healthcare management of the funds, and that is what I'm here to address the court on. I would like, I'd never heard at the Commissioner's Court meeting any discussion about anybody meeting with South Texas Healthcare System. And I would like to formally inform the court that I was contacted by your county auditor and the assistant county auditor, and also Ms. Yvette Salinas from your health district, the health department, and Mr. Pete Inojosa. And we, myself and the CEO for South Texas Healthcare System, and also Mr. Vlasostis, we met with these people here in the courthouse. And the reason that they called us was in regards to informing us that the county had run out of indigent healthcare funds to serve the indigents of Cameron County. They asked us if we would continue serving the indigent at the South Texas Healthcare System. We did inform them that we have never stopped seeing the indigent health patients for Cameron County or of any of the other three counties that we're serving. We're basically serving four counties. We have never stopped seeing any of the indigent patients. I do see some staff coming in from the South Texas Healthcare System. They asked us if we would continue through the time that you are out of funds, and we said yes. They also asked if South Texas Healthcare System, which is funded by the state, could contract with the county. We did state with them that we can contract, the state can contract with the county. The only thing that would take place would be a letter from the Commissioner's Court to the state stating that they would like to contract with the state, which is the South Texas Healthcare System. We are presently trying to provide memogram for the Cadesales females because it's costing a lot of money, and they were paying a lot of money, and for $20, we are providing memograms for the jail females that are there. We do have a contract also for cervical cancer. Basically, right now, we have five social workers, we have a billing department, we have a system that is already, a computer system, that is already set up for indigent patients. We basically have five medical physicians from the community. I know there's Dr. Trapp from Brownsville, there's Dr. Posada, there's Dr. Juan Garcia, the regular medical physicians from the community that South Texas Healthcare System is paying them. So they also, we were also asked by the Yvette Salinas and Mr. Yates, what services we could provide in Brownsville. We did tell them that we could set up a satellite at the Lucio Clinic and provide the same services that are being provided at the South Texas Healthcare System. So I just came here to inform you that we have never stopped seeing indigent patients, even when the county runs out of money. We will always continue, you know, seeing the indigent. There are services that we are presently providing that are duplicated by the county already as diabetes education and many other services. I can only come here and let you know, I know you cannot, you know, discuss this with me because it's not an item on the agenda, but I feel that maybe a workshop would be very important for the Commissioner's Court to learn about the duplication of services that are being provided right now that could save the county a lot of money. And like I said, we already have the system set up. We do have, I believe, Leanne Fitzpatrick and also Sonia Kibble, who is the CEO from our state facility, and as I've stated before, I advocate for them. If there's any questions at any time concerning our program that's been functioning there, you all have to ask them. They cannot come to you and give you the information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cabazos. Faith, do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait till the agenda item? You know, you got a little one. All right. Faith by Estados, East La Blanca Park.
Thank you very much for taking my comments, and this place is beautiful. I haven't been in here yet. It's gorgeous. Good evening, good afternoon. I came to talk about the possible annexation of East La Blanca Park to the town of South Padre Island, and I'll read my statement so I can stay on track here. Last Thursday on April 28th, 2007, a group of us went to East La Blanca Park, and we celebrated the 50th anniversary of the park. On April 28th, 1957, the Brownsville Navigation District signed the deed, turning that property over to Cameron County to be used for, end quotes, "public park purposes only and for no other purpose." I'm here today to ask the court to please not continue with plans allowing the town of South Padre Island to annex East La Blanca Park. Judge Coscos has seen this as a win-win situation wherein the county retains control of the park and continues to earn money through concessionaires, and the town of South Padre Island receives tax revenue from businesses on county property, and its police force and emergency crews would be used to patrol the park and to take care of the park. He has asked us to please help him and find the downside to the deal, as he doesn't see any. Well, the downside is this. The town of South Padre Island wants to develop East La Blanca Park. Why else would they want to annex it? There's very little money for them to make as it is right now as a park unless they have a large development there. That would be the only way within the park proper. The town of South Padre Island has a long history of large-scale development, but it has very little history of creating or maintaining open spaces that are for the public to enjoy. Any of us who live there, I live on the island full-time, I have a home and a business on the island, we feel squeezed out all the time. You just feel like, you know, buildings are towering up on every side of us, and there's just no room, and I'm sure it's even worse for people from the valley coming there who have a hard time finding a place to go. The town of South Padre Island has no interest in making sure that the valley residents have plenty of open accessible beaches. During the month of March, the town really discourages valley people from coming to the island. The day trippers are just frankly not welcome. It's a shame, it's not right, and the people from the valley need to be welcome on the island. This is just so wrong. Those beaches, and especially the beaches that are the county property, they belong to the people of the valley. They should stay with the people of the valley. It's really essential that Cameron County retain full control of East La Blanca Park in order to protect it for the use and enjoyment of its citizens. You'll probably tell me that the county will be in control of the park. We still have control of the park. Well, the problem is when island officials come to you and they have plans for this magnificent development that will bring in truckloads of money and jobs for everyone in the valley, who are you going to listen to? Are you going to listen to me, just a regular citizen and without any power or money or anything, and just one little vote? Or are you going to hear island officials who have promises of money and promises of employment and all kinds of wonderful things? We can't offer you anything. We, the park users, all we can do is we can beg you to leave our park alone for the sake of our children and for our future grandchildren. The only thing we can do is ask you to help us maintain the beautiful quality of life that we enjoy in the valley instead of looking at potential dollar signs and the bottom line. I want to mention a letter that we read, that we received, that was from Cameron County Parks Director Javier Mendez to the Commissioner's Court dated January 8th, 2007, and we just recently saw this letter. In the letter, first off, he mentions that the East La Blanca Park boasts a full-service marina and water park, over 600 RV sites and eight cabanas. I would like to point out that the marina and the water park are not in the park proper. They are not part of East La Blanca Park, so I don't think they should be blurring those lines and trying to start the park where it isn't because the park is where the park starts. My big concern in this letter is the final paragraph, which is entitled "Other Events", and it states, and I quote, "Possible development of a resort facility in East La Blanca Park, the relocation of RV spaces, and two new flagship hotels to be built on the north end of the island on county park land," end quote. So it looks to me like the county has very little interest in keeping the beaches open for its residents. It looks like it is interested in developing as much of the county public land for private use as possible. I just want to ask you to please retain full control of public county land. Please ensure that your constituents will be first and foremost in your plans, and please heed our voices and obey the words of the deed to the park property, which states, "shall be used for public park purposes only and for no other purpose." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Faith. And we will be discussing this item a little bit later. Ruben Benya, do you want to speak now, or you want to wait till the agenda item?
Judge and Commissioners, good afternoon. I won't reiterate what Faith just finished telling you, but there are some concerns that we have, and as you all are deciding this very important issue, you must recognize that it is of great concern to everybody in the county. And that really is kind of one of the questions that I have in my own mind, is why we would give up the ability to control the destiny of what is clearly the jewel of the park system in Cameron County. Why this Commissioner's Court would give up its authority in order to provide services that continue to provide to all the county residents. In other words, everybody in this county, every citizen, has a vested interest in East La Blanca. I was there this weekend with my grandchildren. I don't care about children anymore. I care about my grandchildren. And we had a wonderful time, and the beauty of it is you see people from all walks of life at East La Blanca. Our concern is that we are giving up control to a smaller number of people. Instead of 250,000 people having a voice in East La Blanca, it'll be controlled by those who are elected at South Padre Island. That's the first point. The second point is, remember what has been happening on this issue. It is a concern, again, of all the residents of Cameron County. And what has happened in the past is any indication, many of us feel that what you could not do through the front door is now being attempted through the back door. And that may be wrong. We may have the wrong impression of that, but you haven't given us enough information. There's been no discussion of why this is a win-win situation for the citizens of Cameron County. And finally, the third point I'd like to make is, don't forget, not everybody can afford a couple of hundred dollars a night to stay on the island. There are so many people in our valley who use this park as their vacation, as their ability to have their children and grandchildren go out and enjoy it. We expect you to be the trustees of this very valuable and beautiful asset, and we don't want to give up that authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benya. Melba, do you want to speak to your issues 3 and 27 now, or do you want to wait till it gets to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no objection from anybody in the court, let's take item 28 out of order so we can discuss that. Item 28, consideration, possible action regarding proposed annexation by town of South Padre Island, a designated area of the county property south of town of South Padre Island. Mayor, if you would just, you know, I know you didn't expect this, but I think it's important that there, apparently there's a misperception about this issue. There's two issues at hand. One of them is the annexation of a certain part of our property, and I think, Faith, you alluded to something, something about East La Blanca Park. Mr. Benya said the same thing about the RVs and coming in, all that stuff. The section that the city is proposing is outside of what I think you referred to as East La Blanca Park proper. East La Blanca Park, what I've always seen, I think that's been some of the confusion, is from the toll booth inn. That is what I consider East La Blanca Park, even though there's some of it that's outside of it. The area that the city is proposing to annex is outside of that and basically encompasses the already developed area, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, I don't want to speak on your behalf, which would include the water park and the Sea Ranch and maybe Dirty Owls and that area. It does not include any of the property inside the toll area, so it doesn't include the RV slots, doesn't include Oyster Cove or Dolphin Cove, I mean, whatever those that are in there. So let me just clarify that. I will tell you that there was some discussion three or four weeks ago about the probability or the possibility of looking into having the city annex the remainder of the park. But having listened to you all, I will tell you that I will not support, at this point, the annexation of anything other than what the initial proposal is right now, which I think you all need to listen to, and if you're still adamantly opposed to it, then I would, I'm going to recommend that we, that maybe we form a little committee between, you know, your husband is on the Parks Board, and maybe somebody from Pete's office, and maybe somebody from our legal department, to go over what the city really wants to do, what kind of control we do or do not, you know, give up or things of that nature. So depending on how this goes, if you all still believe that it's the wrong thing to do, then I think the next step would be to ask Commissioner Benavides, who placed this item on the agenda, to table it, have a little committee set up, have Pedro involved in it, and maybe he can convey, you know, his thoughts to the rest of the Friends of East La Blanca group. I do not want to happen what happened last time. So that's why, the last time this item was placed on the agenda, it was simply a discussion item. There was no action involved to give everyone an opportunity to come and visit and talk exactly what you're doing today, and that's the type of dialogue that we needed. So with that, Mayor?
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you, folks, for your comments. I think there is a big misunderstanding on what we're trying to do. First of all, let me tell you that there's been nothing backdoored about this. This has been getting discussed for five years now. Since 2002 is when I started this project with Judge Inojosa and most of the Commissioners that are on. The idea that the town had is, is that what we ask is to annex those portions that are already developed, i.e. Schlitterbaum, Sea Ranch Restaurant, Sea Ranch Marina, Dirty Owls, where the charter boats are. There's a map here of the areas that are designated that I'd be more than happy to give anyone that wants one, to show only those, doesn't even include the park's office. It doesn't include any undeveloped area, number one. Number two, the county loses no control over any of this. They're still, they still have the contracts, they still have the leases. The district we set up is a district to allow, not the grandfather, but just to allow that area to stay exactly like it is as long as the county Commissioner's Court allows them to remain as they are. Whatever the contracts say, we're happy with. Our interest is to receive sales tax that is being generated by those businesses because of the town of South Padre Island tourist business. That's the only thing we want. And to imply that there may be some connection, if that was the implication, that the present development of the Doyle Wells Group, for whatever that name of that group is, is anywhere near connected is absolutely false. There is nothing to do with us. This is not a backdoor deal to get them anything, to get any control so that we have access to that land. That land is controlled by these people, will not be controlled by us to begin with. Doesn't include anything on the inside of the toll booth. Only includes those areas that are already developed and built and in business. So I want to make that very clear. We have no intention of taking control over any land because we couldn't even if we wanted to. They control the leases and the land, not us. Once whatever they allow to be built on the undeveloped areas, that would come into the town once it's developed on their terms, not ours. So that needs to be very well understood by this group, and I really hope, I understand it needs to be discussed so that everybody feels comfortable. It's been discussed for five years, and I was really hoping that we could get some sales tax this summer, but in any case, I think everybody needs to feel comfortable. There's, you know, and I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with this. There's no secret to it, and there's nothing magical about it. It's whatever businesses are here, and I've got Mr. Friedman with Sea Ranch Restaurant, who's been supportive of this issue from inception back in 2002 when I started this, down this road. So I'm here to answer any questions anybody wants. I've got, I gave...
I have a question that I haven't answered, but I'd like the answer from, I'm sorry, I don't think I have, there you go. My question is not of you, Mayor Pinkerton, but is of our legal department. And ordinance number 05-01, which is included in our packet, which was an ordinance that was passed by the town of South Padre on December the 16th of 2004, outlines what the ordained Board of Aldermen of your town did for what you would like to have us accept as a park district.
Yes.
My question to legal counsel is, that ordinance can be removed from existence by a simple majority of aldermen on the island. Is that not true?
That's correct.
So at any time after we're annexed, they can change any ordinance they want by a majority of folks that are sitting on that council?
That's correct.
But I have, well, no, please, I've got to make sure that I understand what I'm doing before I can take a vote on an item, and I want to make sure that...
I'm not quite sure that's correct and stated.
Well, you're not a lawyer, you're not a lawyer.
No, but it needs to go through, it would need to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission first before it's changed, but anyway.
Yeah, but that's just part of the town of South Padre. Not, we don't have a planning and zoning board in Cameron County.
I understand.
We are at the will of the subdivision rules that the state has.
But it would go through the zoning board first.
Yeah, but the zoning board is a board that is appointed by the alderman of the city of the town of South Padre, right?
But, yes, but it's a little bit longer process than that.
Well, it's a little bit longer of a process, but the point that I wish to make is that we have absolutely no control when the majority that sits there today is not there anymore in regards to this ordinance.
That's right.
And we don't have their word because we are clueless as to who that could be. That's all I have to ask.
Commissioner, you know...
I'd like for some of the Commissioners to, you know, I'd like to have a discussion. We have not had an opportunity as Commissioners to talk with each other. You know, I mean, I've listened to what you've presented, I've listened to what I've read, but I really would like to know what the thoughts of some of the other folks are because, you know, I want to be convinced for the right reason to do the right thing. That's it. So, I mean, I'd like to hear what some of the other folks are going to say.
Well, the bottom line, and you answered the question that I had in my mind, what is it that you were after through this annexation? And you already stated the fact that it's a sales tax from the businesses that are already there.
That's correct.
And so that was going to be my question, but you answered it in your presentation. The other concern is the one that Commissioner Garcia just mentioned. I haven't had, I haven't talked to legal on this, and that's, but she's answered the questions right now. We don't control who's going to be on your commission.
That's correct.
And he's correct in saying, well, it has to go through the zoning, so that committee or that board, but then again, they're appointed by the alderman.
That's correct.
And so I do have a concern as far as that goes unless there's something that we're leaving out of this picture in that respect.
Yes, well, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that I can guarantee what future boards are going to do.
No, you can't.
Any more than you can't guarantee what future Commissioner's Courts are going to do. I'm not, you still control the leases. You still control the land. We, I mean, I don't know why a board sometime in the future would want to come down and change anything unless it might be for the better, but they, you still control the leases and the contracts. So I think that we're, you know, this is, this is an annexation of, to me, it's not a true annexation in that we're not going to control the land. Do we control the land? You have the leases.
No, the county controls what is done on their property through the contract that they enter into with whoever the less seen may be.
That's correct. So I'm not sure what a future board would want to do that would upset the apple cart, if you will. I mean, it just... Um, I mean, the, it, it just, I, I don't like to think in those terms because it's a good deal as it is for the town, for the businesses, and not a bad deal for the county. Uh, the list of benefits that I handed out to you, I think speak for themselves, um, and I don't know what the downsides are. You know, unless someone has someone, something from the audience, other than a board that would, that would suddenly be elected that for devious reasons would want to change some things, but I don't know what they'd want to change or what they could change legally.
Mayor, may I address the issue? I came into the picture in November and I, I spoke with you in early January and we, uh, talked about what had been proposed prior to my coming in and to Judge Gosworth's coming in. And we brought it before the court in executive session. Then we asked you to come back and you made a presentation. And I don't think there's anybody here on this board that would find in their heart to let go of any county property that belongs to the citizens in any, with any deceit. Um, and I know it's been implied that it's been through the backdoor. I don't think that is correct. We never said that we were going to include anything past the gate at Isla Blanca Park. I always thought it was going to be outside the gate, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Legal or anybody else, because that was never the intention. And I don't know who would have put that word out, but as long as I sit here, there will be no annexation inside Isla Blanca Park. Yes, sir?
That, well, there was, yeah, as the judge made reference to, there's been in the last, since the last meeting, some, uh, some thought about, well, after we do this, is there an interest in the town doing the balance for the beach maintenance and taking over the balance of the park? Our ETJ already goes five miles. It's already, it already includes the park, our, our ETJ does. All of it, as it stands right now, without any annexation. And so I said, well, hey, I'll talk to my Board of Aldermen and find out what their thoughts on it are. I passed it by them, they said, let's look into it. If the county wants it, we'll do it. Our interest since 2002 has been, from the toll booth out, only the developed producing businesses. That is all that we're, we've been asking for. We, we haven't asked for anything else. Haven't asked for any undeveloped land, we don't expect to get any undeveloped land, we don't expect to take control over any land.
Okay, well, I was not apprised of that. I mean, whether somebody approached you on that, it, that was never thought before me. The reason I put it on was because it was something that has been in discussion, like you said, for five years, and it was not going to deviate from that plan at all.
Well, and that's why the agenda item says designated area.
But see, I think the point here is, I, I don't have anything in the, in the background material that actually shows me from point A to point B. Do you?
Uh, those were packages that were given to you before the last meeting-
Before-
-that had a survey like this one that showed the areas that were save and accept, not included, which were the undeveloped areas. There's an area north of Sea Ranch Restaurant, there's an area across the street that orders Schlitterbaum, there's the park system, uh, anybody, anybody that wishes this copy can have it when I'm finished referring to it.
Mayor, we were looking to try to find out how the, this, this proposal changed from the, I guess from 2002 or 2003. Did the overlay change? Did something change? We want to get like an overlay map, but let me address Commissioner Benavides's issue. Um, I'm the one that, that suggested, uh, would there be an interest in doing it, okay? It was just for discussion purposes, feel everybody out, but I will tell you that nothing was going to get done until we had public input, until we had, you mentioned at a public meeting, there was nothing that was, that was hidden. Uh, it was, it was set in an open meeting and I wanted you to see. And then if, if y'all were agreeable, then we bring it here for discussion.
Correct.
Talk about, it's that simple. Like I said, nothing is going to happen the way it happened the last time we had issues with Isla Blanca Park. Uh, so that's the issue. Nobody was hiding anything, I think it was made public. Uh, if it would have been hidden, you wouldn't have, y'all would not have known about it. So obviously, it was something public that was discussed to talk about the, the potential for the future. And I will tell you that at some point, at some point in time, the city of South Padre will be large enough to where we may not have any input in what they can annex or not. Uh, if their population reaches a certain size, but right now, that's, that's not, you know, we're not there yet. So the, the annexation that you've placed on the agenda has not deviated from the last time we had the discussion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's the same one, it's not anything else, so your interpretation is, is, is not valid because we're not including anything into the gate. It was exactly what we talked about the last time. That's the agenda item that, that we're speaking to today.
Judge?
Now, if there's, if there's, if there's a reason that we need to go back and form a committee to discuss this further with, you know, with, with, uh, members of our Parks Board, with our Legal Division, maybe somebody from your office and somebody, you know, and talk about the ups and downs and, and this and that. That's why, uh, that's the purpose of this dialogue, okay? So, um, you know, that was, again, that was, that was something that, that I brought up more tongue in cheek with, with the mayor, um, and, and the discussion was had, you know, between us and just see what's, if there's any interest. If there's no interest and there's a lot of opposition, it's not going to happen. It just won't, it just won't, I don't, well, from my, from my vantage point, it, it won't happen, so.
And, and I'm not sure it's something we would push.
Yeah, exactly.
Matter of fact, not, not from my side, I can assure you.
So this is the purpose of this type of, 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 of dialogue, to get y'all's feedback, to make sure that, that we're going in a direction that, that is not, you know, you know, cloak and dagger. It's just basically just, you know, to get input, and you've done that. So, you know, I've listened and so from the, from anything inside the park at this point, then I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support that.
Judge, I have not changed my thinking and my request from what I first suggested in 2002.
All right, so it's the same, okay, and we voted-
Basically, it's the same thing. There were some questions concerning the first survey that was done by the county because the, the, the boundaries weren't meeting up, uh, and, uh, and we had it resurveyed by Mahia and Rose, and this is a copy of it here. It designates exactly what's being annexed or what would be annexed. And it's nothing but, uh, developed areas excluding, uh, the KOA Park, which is not in the county, uh, excluding the park offices, uh, excluding, uh, a large area north of the, um, of the Sea Ranch Restaurant that is referred to as part of the Sea Ranch Track, uh, a, an area across the, um, Park Road over on the Schlitterbaum section, and, uh, everything else that's developed is part of the deal.
Mayor, does, does that survey include Dirty Owls?
Um, I don't believe so.
It doesn't appear to, no.
Mayor, and, and I, I realize that you have brought it before us. I got on the commission in 2003 and it was there then, and we talked about it in '04 and '05 and '06, and it seems like it's something that's continued to come up.
Yes.
And I know there was some issues about the Town of South Padre Island, working with the legislature on changing issues and all, um, and having dealt with a city and been on a city commission before where the city had the power to annex, whether anyone liked it or not, I oftentimes voted against those. And, and you're aware of that because I've expressed that almost every time you've been before us.
Correct.
And with Dewey Caswell, when he would be before us.
Correct.
Uh, my opposition generally when the city of Brownsville, the annexing was, city of Brownsville did not have the ability to provide services that were needed into the annexed areas.
Correct.
And we still, you know, we had annexed areas and, and we still had dirt streets inside the city limits that hadn't been taken care of. So I had some real problems with that. Uh, this issue, and I, and I realize, as Commissioner Garcia's pointed out, any ordinance can be changed by going through the proper channels within the city because that's the city's ability to do that. Counties don't have those abilities to do zoning and things. And, and so I understand those can happen. Uh, what we have here is, is I guess a test of your faith and, and our faith as to whether or not these might be changed in the future. Don't know, don't know, can't, can't predict that. Uh, I do see, and I do understand, because I've done my homework, I understand, uh, when this came on the agenda, I asked to be sure that the agenda was no different than what we discussed in a discussion, uh, session on open court a month ago?
Correct.
Something like that?
About a month ago.
We all had the maps, we looked at them, I asked about areas. I don't believe Dirty Owls was included in the area at that time.
Right.
Uh, as best we could determine, it wasn't. Uh, I could have been wrong because there's some real fine lines there. Uh, but I do also see, and I think this is the first time I've seen, at least in print, a list of the benefits that South Padre Island would provide. Obviously, I understand that there are several here that would be provided by statute because you've got to comply with providing police protection, you've got to comply with providing, uh, first responder protection, EMS and fire, those things, the insurance ratings, they do go down, I understand that. Code enforcement services, that's part of your responsibilities. Street repair signage and drainage maintenance, those again. And if you have the ability to provide those, that's great, because sometimes they don't get provided the way they should be provided by the county. Uh, because we are stretched beyond our limits.
Correct.
Oftentimes. Um, so I'm, I'm, I appreciate you being here. I don't know whether there is going to be a committee put together. If there is, that's fine. Uh, I've, you know, I, I don't, I guess I have anything more to say. Uh, I've expressed my views about annexation several times. That doesn't mean my views aren't subject to change, Mayor. But, uh, it would be interesting to see how this would work out with a committee looking at it. I think Mr. Fainio wants to talk about a committee or something.
Do you share with us one of the benefits of law?
It's 10,000.
Right now, right now, we, we have the Parks Patrol, our Park Rangers doing patrolling. They would have regular police patrols, code enforcement services, health issues like that. When you have a restaurant, you've got code enforcement, you've got health issues that come up. Uh, right now, we, they, they right now provide fire and first responder, fire and EMS through contracts, through the, uh, Emergency Services District. So this is something that they already provide, they get paid for it now, they wouldn't get paid for it after they're annexed. You're going to lose some money there, Mayor. The fire insurance ratings will go down because it's inside of city limits, that's insurance regulations from the state. Uh, it looks like they're going to be doing some beach maintenance on the beaches within the area that's covered. Uh, street repair, signage and drainage, the county does that now. I'm not sure we do it to the same standard that they do it within the city of South Padre Island. I know that their streets, uh, they have a different standard on even constructing streets than the county does. Routine street sweeping, we don't have a street sweeper. Trash and litter control and enforcement in the area covered. Our trash and litter control oftentimes ends up being what the sheriff can provide through the PAWS program, uh, waste management contract in the area covered, collecting the garbage, grass cutting, palm tree trimming and right-of-way grooming, these are things that they provided or say they would be providing if it's annexed. They do this within the city limits already. Building code enforcement, identical to that which the county is already following. That was one of our big issues because we don't, we don't have as strict a building code in the county and on South Padre Island, Isla Blanca Park area or outside Isla Blanca Park area as the city of South Padre Island does. For example, there are certain types of construction they don't allow within the town that the county does allow. However, when they passed ordinance number 0501, they're saying that whatever we agree to with our lesssees, because there's still going to be our lesssees, and our owning of the property, that they will abide by. The, and that's, the county's already following. Potential revenue improvement for businesses collecting sales tax, they keep a half of 1% of whatever they pay on time, that's probably not a whole lot, but it is a benefit, it is a benefit. Inclusion in the town's marketing plan, a plan that the town in, in town invested more than a million dollars in last year, that's probably the biggest benefit. And it's the biggest benefit to the people who have businesses there. Uh, right now, the businesses, litter bond, the restaurants, do not participate in South Padre Island's, uh, overall promotional plans and advertising that they do throughout the United States and through brochures and how, all the different ways that they advertise, they don't participate within that. That would be, they'd be part of the town, they'd be participating in it. Uh, that's the benefits listed, you know?
Judge, learning from past experience. Uh, I don't want us to do anything in haste. I think that, well, I'll make a motion that this be tabled and that you form a committee of representation from the interested parties, uh, to come back to this court and address some of the concerns that, uh, have been raised.
Okay, I have a motion to table the item and form a committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, discussion. Um, I agree. I think that, uh, if y'all, with y'all's approval, I'd like to appoint, uh, somebody from, uh, from Pete's office. I'd like to appoint Faith, do you think Pedro would want to sit on this committee? He, he also sits on our Parks Board, he's, he's a part of the Friends of Isla Blanca Park. Um, Ruben, would you like to sit on this ad hoc committee?
May I?
Okay, if you name me, I will, sir. Um, is there somebody else that you'd like to-
You have to have someone legal.
Yeah, yeah, some legal divya. And then maybe somebody, either your, somebody from your office, either your city manager or, uh, yourself or a member of the alderman. Um, let me have, uh, Pete's office chair the committee and he can coordinate with y'all meet, uh, maybe after the holiday. And then whenever y'all are ready and discuss. And these are the types of things that, it should be a, a meeting that's open, you know, I don't think you have to post it anywhere, but, but I think just make sure that, uh, that whoever needs to know knows. Uh, to do that and then come back, I guess in a few weeks with a, with a recommendation. Um, and hopefully that'll satisfy you all, okay? Is that all right? Okay. We had a motion, the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Thank you Judge. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Please, please.
Okay, uh, consent items, are there any items, uh, that any member of the court wishes to take out of order and discuss separately?
I would like to pull number four. Consideration of approval of contract.
Got it, mhm. Anything else?
Judge, item 14 needs to be tabled.
Judge, on item 10, please, I just have some changes to talk to you about.
Let's just take that one out. Okay?
10. Which one is that, I'm sorry?
Item number 10. We can take out item number three, which is consideration of option of resolution reducing the board members of Child Welfare Board, we will talk about that separately. Item number four, the Commissioner Thamayo. Uh, item number 10, having to do with the Cameron County Emergency Communication 911 District.
And in conjunction with the item that you took out with the pathologist, do you want to take out the one with the, um, the facility?
Well, that's a supplemental.
It's a separate one, but it's under consent as well.
We can take that one out as well. That's part of the supplemental, it's having to do with the agreement with Elizondo, that one?
Yes.
We'll, we'll take that one out and discuss separately. Anything else? On item nine, um, the DA called me this morning, there's a typo on item nine. Is anybody from the DA's office here? David? Um, I know you all called this morning, there's a typo on the, uh, on the agenda request regarding the, um, the advertising.
Advertise.
Okay? So the, uh, the way it was originally worded was be advertised on the 8th of July and closing and, and opening on the 9th and closing on the 23rd, I think there's a typo there.
Yes.
Okay, you want to make that correction, make sure that we get it to the, to the clerk?
Sure.
Okay, so it would be made- Okay. So it would be made on July the eighth with bids opening on what day?
I believe, I don't have the, I left the paperwork at my, at my seat. But it should be the same date, other than the opening should be switched to posting. I believe that was the mistake.
Or closing, you mean?
That's right.
Okay. So then really the correction is you're going to advertise on the eighth and closing on the twenty-third?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
No opening.
No, there's no opening. Opening and closing, I guess, on the twenty-third. And thank you for bringing that to our attention.
No, I appreciate it, Judge.
All right? Thanks. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve all the consent items as previously discussed and the travel items?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Tomayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no executive session, Pete?
No executive session.
Okay, great. All right. Let's go to item number three, consideration, we're going to take item three, I guess, so Melba didn't have to stand very long, and we'll then do twenty-seven right after that. So item three, consideration and adoption of a resolution reducing the board members of the Child Welfare Board from fifteen to seven. If you recall, we discussed this last week and I think there was a consensus to drop down the number of board members from fifteen to seven. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Tomayo. Discussion. Melba?
My discussion is, how many of the ones that are on there are still willing to serve? I know that we had two active ones that were here the last time.
As of right now, officially, I think there's four.
Four.
And I will, I will fax a copy to, or turn in personally to everyone's office, the people who are on that, on that list.
And on there, it has their address?
Yes. Their address, their phone number, where they work, and what their interest is, what their interest is about being on the board.
Okay. All right.
So that would mean there's three vacancies?
That's correct.
And also with those that are staying on board, realizing that it's not business as usual?
Yes. We've got a big, we've got a big job ahead of us.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Might as well stay up there for the other item. Okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me skip to item twenty-seven. Discussion possible action regarding the space allocation for the Child Welfare Board.
Judge, Commissioners, last, after last week's meeting, I met with Mr. Ivada. And then he and I went and I made contact first with Judge Magdalia Lopez, and she was going to be out. So she asked me to speak to the judges that were still here. I spoke to Judge A.C. Nelson and to Judge Janet Leal. After doing so, I also went to the administration building, went through what used to be Judge Nohosa's area, and I found that there was one empty room that was full of stuff. So after looking through there, I spoke to Judge Martinez, who presently is occupying all that area. And he, I told him what our problem was, and he had no problem with vacating that empty room and moving whoever was in room, I think it's four twenty-six, Pete?
Four twenty-six.
Out of there in order that the child welfare, well, actually, that the children that are out there because their parents are either in some sort of legal dispute, be put in there. I spoke to both Casa and I spoke to Ms. Montemayor, and they're willing to go ahead and move in there and make it child-friendly, which I think was the original intent of the attached administration. This does not allocate any office space for either Casa or child welfare. This is just to be able to put the children in there, keep them out of the hallways. And I think after speaking to Judge, I mean, to Pizza Bulb, that we went ahead and sent out a memo to the district judges and to you all regarding this matter. Another area that we also look for, and this is just a temporary solution, another area that we might be looking at is the law library. They have one room that is not being utilized at this moment. And I spoke to Mr. David Montales, and he showed me around also. That's one possible location that we might be able to use if and when we move the court, CPS court, into the judicial building. It's just something we might consider.
Was, Commissioner Tomayo was supposed to attend, go with you on that? Did you, were you able to go?
No, but, no, I wasn't contacted and I realized.
I didn't contact you? Actually, I thought you wanted to sit in in a meeting. I really couldn't get a meeting together, so I was trying to move quickly and this is why I didn't.
Well, I'm extremely interested in this, in this particular focus that we're taking, and I realize you have a lot of commitments. Commissioner, but if you could have your secretary call me?
Sure.
I'd like to just be involved. I'm glad that, from what you've said from your report, what we really have here is a holding area. A holding area for those children and which is of ultimate importance for the many reasons that Commissioner Benavides stated. So if you'll just give me a call, Commissioner, I would be more than glad to join you, especially at official meeting.
I'd like to be sure that I understand that we're talking about any children and all children, not the children of any one particular group, you know, whatever children there, Casa children.
They're all the same ones.
Child welfare children. They're all the same children.
They're all the same.
And it's not restricted in one group.
No.
It's just, it's for the kids, for the children.
And the children that Casa and our group and Monica, I mean, everyone's children, they're all the same children.
End up being the same children.
We just all work together. Casa does their part, we do our part, Monica's house does their part. Everyone's just a little part of a big, of a big puzzle.
And this is a place for those children. Get them out of the hallways because they're sitting on the floor.
I went by personally to see when I found out that Commissioner Benavides had, Commissioner Benavides had, had found a space for us. And I went personally to see it today, and it's a, it's a good-sized room. It's not anything large, but I did say we would take a closet anyway. But this is big enough to hold at least some of the children. There are days that there's less children at court and they'll be able to all fit in there, but there's days that they're not all going to fit in there. But at least you don't have good majority all out in the hallway. And about, about it being temporary, this is, I understand that this is temporary and then we will have to work on something later on in the future, so don't forget us and we have to keep in mind what we're going to prepare for the future. So Commissioners Tomayo, Commissioner Benavides, I hope we can get together and work something out on that purpose of this, but we've got time for that. The other, the other thing I was going to mention is I understand that a portion of the legal library was available. I think that sounds okay, but do you really want children in there? I mean, are there books in there that might get written on or damaged and?
There are a lot of.
I'm afraid for the books.
I don't, I think probably the room they're talking about, there's probably not any books, but there are a lot of other issues with using that room that is at the legal library, which we probably need to go into sometime later on as a committee or a group looking at that. And I'm not volunteering to serve on that committee, but I know what we've gone through in the past in using room from the legal library and how it actually impacts the attorneys that practice law in the courts in the system.
And I think that this court has made a commitment to giving back to the law library what we took away as soon as the expansion of the third floor, or second, second and third floors.
Actually, it's been given back already.
Roger Hughes is here. Roger, you want to address?
We need to keep that available for the attorneys.
Yeah.
They have no place to discuss items.
I am for that, too.
With their, yeah.
I think the law library should stay in the library.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on little or short notice. We just found out about this. My name is Roger Hughes. I'm currently the County Bar Association President and the Chairman of the Law Library. And I, I feel like reminding you of what you all, many of you already remember, that is that part of the district attorney being allowed to take part of our space was that when he vacated that area, we would get all of it back for our use. Well, that happened this year through nobody's fault whatsoever. It took forever to get, for the DA to be able to move. We just acquired the space back and the building people are moving as fast as they can to, so to speak, fit those offices to our need, that is, to put doors from the offices into our, our area so that we can access it. The part that they're talking about is, is a room that as yet the building people have not gotten to, to build the door back in to our area when, and that's why it appears to be unused. Our concern is that, I mean, I understand that children have to have a, have a place and them wandering around the halls is the last place we want them to be when their parents and their guardians are involved in legal proceedings. But it's also not a good idea to have them anywhere near the law library. I mean, children by nature, they wander about and they make noise. That's just what children do. It's not a good thing to have next to the law library. I'm not sure anyone is seriously considering it, but we are concerned about this. If there's any thought about taking this space, we would like to be part of any committee studying it. We certainly want to be in the loop. And I appreciate the opportunity to give, for us to speak on very short notice.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
I have a question, Judge, and following up on what he just mentioned, children will be children. Commissioner Benavides, and I realize that maybe this is a long, not a long range, we have, we have to be prepared. A holding area for children is not just a space. Who's going to be responsible for getting the things there that need to be there for children because we don't know, you know, the periods of time? And I'm sure there's volunteers that involve. I know Commissioner Garza has been involved and I definitely have been involved with Maggie's house and Monica's house. And you have to have the environment for children there. And so I, I don't know if your discussions have gone that far, Commissioner Benavides?
Actually, I was called by Angela Burton, who is now with Casa. And she called me and she let me know that she wanted this court to know that they have no interest in office space. All they want is a room to be able to hold the children in. I asked them, I said, okay, if we give you this room, what are you going to do to entertain these children, to keep them out of the hallways? They said that she had no problem going out to the community and soliciting books for the children, you know, whatever it takes to keep the children in a friendly environment.
Well, that was, that was my concern, and since I didn't know how far you'd gotten with your discussions. I just had to bring that up because definitely, you know, getting the holding room is just your first, your first step. But then what do you do with that environment is just as important.
We would work in joint effort with them to get help out from the community. And there had already been, there had already been interest in if this room ever came about getting supplies for the couches, some coloring books, some games, things to keep the kids interested.
It might be something that the bar association might want to look at.
Donate.
Perhaps helping out since it is all legal and has to do with the children and.
Definitely.
I'd like to just, at this point, since this is a temporary measure in the utilization of that room four twenty-six, till something else comes up, I would like to just move that we approve for that space to be used by the agencies involved with the children in the court until we find a bigger room for them.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
To authorize the use of room four twenty-six by the agencies that we've been speaking about. Second by Commissioner Tomayo. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you, Melba.
Judge, I just wanted to briefly state that I know that it's going to get more difficult later because I understand you all have three courtrooms going in upstairs. And I also understand with that third courtroom will be coming jury duty in that courtroom. So you're going to have, we need to prepare because you're not only going to have jurors out there waiting, you're going to have jurors, children, parents, attorneys. So we might, I mean, I understand the lack of space, but maybe you might also take into consideration this courtroom to move the children out here. I'm not sure what else this building is being used for, but in case of an emergency and an evacuation from the building, we, maybe you might consider letting us come here for the, for the CPS court, for the kids. Just throwing it out there so it can be.
All right. We'll take that under advisement.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Item twenty-two, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
We have, we have four, so.
I think I'm done, though.
Number four.
Four.
Unappointed item.
Oh, hold on, I forget it. Four, can, four and ten. Item number four, consideration approval of contract between Cameron County and Dr. F.P. Salinas. Pathologists provide autopsy services.
Judge, can you also do the one with Elizondo because they kind of go together? If you could discuss.
Let's do four first.
Judge and Commissioners, as I reported last week, for the last couple of months, we've been looking at different options on our pathologist, you know, looking at a short-term solution, a long-term solution, and even eventually transitioning into a regional medical examiner's office. And last week, I'd spoken to Dr. Farley and there was one month that she couldn't assist us, and that was the month of July, and that's why we considered a month-to-month contract with Dr. Salinas. However, there might be some, some developments that I'm not aware of where Dr. Farley might have reconsidered assisting us in the month of July, which would cover us, you know, for that period that we were having a difficulty with.
Yes, I had, I got some information and I would like for the JP sitting back there to come forward. They gave me some information last night that I felt needed to be shared with the court in reference to this agenda item. And Judge Gonzalez, Judge Sanchez, Judge Mangueira, I don't know you by any other name except Mangueira.
Muniz.
Judge Muniz.
I do. I just want to make sure, I read an article today, I think, that the local newspaper wrote, "The county has not been without a pathologist. The county has been serviced by the Valley Pathology Group at Valley Baptist. We have had their services through the end of last month, and we have not been from January first to now without pathology services. We've been getting serviced all this time."
Gentlemen, you've got the floor.
Looks like choir boys. Good afternoon.
Barbershop, barbershop quartet.
A quartet.
Let me, let me first address the county judge and the commissioners. In regards to services, I had a body that I was called on Sunday morning. And the body had been there between five to seven days in the heat that we've been having in an apartment. No air conditioning of any kind, and the body was badly decomposed. When I got called out there, I didn't know if there was foul play involved or it was from natural causes. So at that particular time, I knew the individual. He was a local residence of La Feria. And I knew that he had been involved in some altercations there prior to this, a few years back. And at that particular time, I didn't know whether it was foul play involved or it was just a natural cause. I had not been advised that we could no longer get any autopsies done at Valley Baptist. I contacted the security at Valley Baptist and they told me that they were no longer taking any bodies there. So I gave the authority to Rudy Garcia Funeral Home to go ahead and bag the body, break it out till we determine what to do with the body. I didn't have anywhere else to take that body or direct it to them. And I made some additional calls, finally got ahold of Arnold out of the. And I made some additional calls, finally got a hold of Arnold Arguin. And if it hadn't have been for Arnold to give me the authority to take that body, I really don't know what I would have been able to do. Would have had some other problems running into some of these problems with the funeral home waiting there to find out what was going on. Now, there was some type of miscommunications because they sure didn't let us know that we were not allowed at Valley Baptist to take any bodies there because they weren't doing any autopsies. I ordered a gross examination to the body, and that's basically to find out if there's any type of foul play because we don't do a full autopsy unless it's necessary to determine the cause of death. But my understanding is that Salinas over in Mission was taking care of the bodies. And through conversations with Mr. Arguin, he advised me that we could make arrangements to take the body over there. But somewhere along the way, the ball was dropped in not letting the JPs know that we could not take them to Valley Baptist. I don't know if there's been a committee set up. I don't know what's been going on. But I think that the committee that has been set up has not involved a JP. And I know that DA's office has been involved in this, but however, most of the DAs are involved in a homicide. The JPs are involved in every day when there's a body out there, whether they find him floating in the river, whether it's a body that's decomposed, natural causes. And we need to make a determination. And we do a lot more, I don't know how many homicides they have, but they, maybe 15 to 20 a year, while we have these other deaths being caused out there. And I think we need, if there is a committee of some kind, that they need to place a JP or one of the presiding JPs involved in that committee so they can let the rest of the JPs know what is going on. Like I said, that was the only problem Sunday, that if it hadn't been for Mr. Arguin, I don't know what I'd have done with the body. I know that there's ways of getting the body transported out of the county, but we would have to have a hearing and evidence in why we would need that body removed from this county and taken to another facility. I would just like for the commission to know that, you know, if there is some type of committee, we probably need a representative from the JP's office to let us know what's going on. And I'll let the rest of the colleagues, maybe they've got something else they need to add. If anybody has any questions, I'm...
Judge, if I understand correctly, then if we were to use Salinas and he cannot use Valley Baptist, the body would be...
My understanding is he doesn't do it here at Valley Baptist. They have to be transported over there. In this case, he was transported, the body was transported by Rudy Garza, but there is a charge for transporting him over there. Now, just in conversation with Arguin, this is a, an individual that lived by himself. I think Mr. Arguin said that his sister had contacted his office, and supposedly they didn't have any money for burial or transfers or anything. So I don't know where this money's going to come from, or if they're going to talk to the county, or the sister's going to get in contact with the county in reference for a burial for this man. Now, he's probably going to have to be transported back from Hidalgo County back to Cameron County or somewhere else with additional expenses.
Judge, did I understand you to say that if a body is transported outside the county, that there is a hearing required to do that for cause to determine why it has to be transported outside the county?
There is a statute in the Code of Criminal Procedure that calls for a hearing to be held. If there's enough evidence, I have never had one, but this is what it reads, is that if you have enough evidence shown that it can be transported to another county, but it's a hearing and an order to follow by the judge. And I don't know in what cases that would occur. I would think that if maybe the body was located here and the family wanted the autopsy or whatever, if we ordered one, it'd be fine. If the family orders it, of course, they have to pay for it. But if we needed one, I guess we could order the transport to a different county.
But there's still a certain process that has to be followed.
That is correct.
Judge Sanchez?
Good evening. Just to follow up on what Judge Gonzalez was saying, whenever we order an autopsy, it's an actual order that we're giving. And when we issue that order, we need to address it to somebody. Well, historically, because we've always dealt with Valley Baptist, we issue the order to Valley Baptist Medical Center Pathology Department, or we'd put Dr. Farley, or Dr. Dewitt, or Dr. Davenport, whoever is up there. But in this situation that Judge Gonzalez had, I mean, I don't know if he was able to put on there who the order was sent to. And in addition, if he ordered that autopsy done, did we have, do we have authority to bind ourselves to that individual? And I think maybe that was before the Commissioners' Court today. I'm not sure. But in any case, we need to at least know what's going on. That way, we can know where to send these bodies when we have to deal with them. I think Arnold Arguin could probably shed a lot of light on the situation for the court. I know you had a question about whether Valley Baptist could hold them there or not. I think the facility may be able to be available for use, but I know that we do have to pay some sort of fee. Or whenever, in the past that we had autopsies done, part of the charge included a certain amount that would go to the facility for the chemicals they use and use of the morgue and, you know, just different things. So I think Arnold can better give you an understanding of that. But I think in the overall situation and what we're looking at, there's been, there's been some talk between us and Valley Baptist in the past. And at one point, we had come together to talk about, in certain situations, you don't need to order a full inquest, I mean, a full autopsy to determine cause of death. And we talked about possibly hiring an investigator that maybe the county could pay for that would allow to cut down on the number of autopsies. Because the county pays per autopsy in addition to all the other fees on every inquest we do. And if there's a way to have that investigator follow up with medical records and do other things that would avoid having an autopsy done, well, that saves the county money. It avoids the body being invaded that doesn't need to be invaded for purposes of the autopsy. And it gets that body available quicker to the family for their services that they're going to have. So there is, I think, a lot of different aspects and considerations in determining which way the county's going to go in hiring a specific forensic specialist. I know the DA's office main concern, like Judge Gonzalez said, was when you have a homicide or that type of situation, a murder, a baby, then of course, you're going to need to get the right type of person doing that autopsy, someone that can come into a courtroom and testify as a forensic specialist, as an expert. So I know that, I believe that the DA's office had already spoken to Dr. Farley in any type of situation that that would occur, and they were going to have her do those autopsies and, I guess, pay them directly. Or I'm not sure what the deal was. But I know that Dr. Salinas is not a forensic specialist, and that may cause an issue in the future. So there's a lot of different things that I think need to be discussed, but time is of the essence, and I think we need to do something sooner than later in this area. Thank you.
Now, according to the discussions last night, and is Mr. Arguin still here? Or is he gone?
Yes, he's here.
What I was interested in is knowing, I thought that he had mentioned the fact that there was a possibility that Dr. Farley would help immediately. Am I correct?
Dr. Farley, according to the meeting that we had, is out for the month of July. The reason for this contract being before us tonight is because she could not do anything this month. She said that after the month of July...
The whole month of July?
The whole month of July. And after July, yes, we are going to be meeting with her. And by we, I mean Pizza Pulver and myself, because that's, there's no committee, that's it, you know? I mean, we're just trying to do something in a stopgap measure to carry us through the month of July and possibly August, because we don't know if there'll be enough time to work something up with Dr. Farley. Ideally, I know that we had a meeting two weeks ago, or two weeks ago tomorrow with J.D. Salinas, and the judge was there also. And we discussed the ME's office that Judge Sanchez made reference to. Ideally, that's where we want to go, and ideally, that's where the forensic pathologists want to go. They feel that that process will better handle the situations that come up. But in regard to that, she was just not available this month, coming up July. So something needed to be done immediately.
Exactly. And this just developed last night when the DA called me.
Well, it was this time last night when we got, when Judge Gonzalez got involved over there and had that problem over there. We needed to address it as quick as possible. We felt that we needed to come up here and talk to you. Commissioner and Judge, you know, Arnold brought some paperwork. I don't know if everybody got a copy of this.
No, he just, he just had it.
We got it here late. We were out of town, and we just got back here late with the rain, come on, pretty good rain.
Well, maybe Mr. Arguin had the information on, you had just, did you speak to Dr. Farley today? Would you share that information with us?
I spoke with, first of all, I'm here as an individual, as a private head, as another employee of Valley Baptist or a representative of Valley Baptist. I did speak with Dr. Farley today, and she is about three or four days away from maybe hiring another doctor. She said she would know at the latest Tuesday. There's a 95% chance that she will hire. The lady's already got rights at Valley Baptist. She's...
And she's a forensic pathologist?
No. No, she's not a forensic pathologist, but she's willing to do the autopsies that do not need a forensic pathologist, just decompose body that's...
Was that the individual we had talked about? Dr. Thompson?
No. No, it's another, it's another... And if there's a murder case, she could come from Hidalgo County, because Dr. Farley still has rights at Valley Baptist. And they would sort of switch around. If there's a case that she needs to come down here, she would do it. But they need to sit down with her and whoever's in charge and discuss it with her. She needs a secretary, which we've needed a secretary for a long time. And she asked me if I was willing to work with her. She said, you know, I've been there for 20 years, and I think I'm pretty good at what I do, since they haven't fired me yet, so... But she's going to be out on vacation, and I'm going out on vacation starting day after tomorrow. But I can, all they have to do is call me. She knows that.
And that communication that you're referring to and that you're, that memo that you have there, you received, that was something you got today?
She texted to me about 12 o'clock today.
Okay.
And she was, she said, I'm interested, I'm willing to talk, sit down and talk to them, but it needs to be...
Well, and again, though, we want to talk to her, but I think that what we need to do is take care of the situation immediately. And to do that, we have to have somebody on board. We don't want another one of the JPs to be in a situation like you were, you know, Judge Gonzalez, you know, because it's not right for you to be there, you know?
I'm sure we talked to her between now and Tuesday. I hope we don't have a mass disaster between now and then. But I think she'll be able, she'll be able to help you.
Well, she has Pete's number and my number, and she hasn't called us, you know? That's the only issue, you know, because she knew we were very interested.
She hadn't heard about, she hadn't heard about this next pathologist till today also, till this morning. This other lady was calling me when Dr. Farley was calling me, so she was excited about it. So now she can probably work with you. She said she would work with you.
Okay. Pete?
Yeah, when I spoke to Dr. Farley last week, you know, that's pretty much what she told me, that there might be a possibility that in the middle of the month, she could contract with another pathologist to help her out, but she wasn't sure. So it's pretty much what she had told me. But again, that's the middle of the month, so we've got, you know, a couple of weeks that we need to have, you know, a pathologist come in and assist us. And I think that's, this contract is a 30-day contract and a month-to-month, and, you know, if we can enter into another arrangement with Dr. Farley, then, you know, we can certainly do that. Now, in our discussions, you know, we will be able to utilize the facilities at Valley Baptist. Valley Baptist has committed to funding a full-time secretary, and then the county would come in with an investigator to assist the pathologist.
Yeah, Valley Baptist committed to the full-time secretary already.
That was discussed back in February, I think, when we went up there to see Springfield back in February. Because Costco, we were president of that, item also. But we need to get, well, are we in contract with Salinas right now?
That's what we have on the agenda tonight.
But we need to get this thing done and get it out of the way so we can keep going on our happy business.
We're waiting for you.
Well, but we just needed for discussion on it, so everybody would understand where we're at, and I'll make copies of it and I'll send them to you guys.
The issue is, the commitment of this commission to me, you know, as we've talked to the different folks, has been to move toward developing an ME's office, okay? That's been the push. The finding of a forensic pathologist is pretty difficult. But if you can have, you know, and we've discussed that with Dr. Farley, if you can have a pathologist work under her and utilize her for those specialized cases that Mr. Gonzalez over there has concerns with at times, you know, to get that expert that you need at times, Judge, then we would be covered. And that's the whole idea. But in the meantime, we've got to get something right now so that you guys don't have a problem.
Short-term. He's talking about short-term. Let me just clarify something, and I didn't get to read the whole memo, Mr. Arguin. Well, go ahead and keep it, let me just have him. Does this, what she's saying in that memo to you, does it differ from what Commissioner Garcia had been told? What, two weeks ago, or?
Yeah, that it would be another month before she could...
Another month. Now, I don't think that's what that's saying.
No. This, if this other doctor will sign on with her, she would probably be a couple of weeks at the most.
Two weeks.
Because she'll sign on Tuesday. If she says yes on Tuesday, she's on board.
Well, do we want to be without for another week?
You have an urgency.
I think what we need, we need to understand, we're coming into the 4th of July, that's tomorrow. If this case that I had Sunday, and say it turned out to be foul play, a homicide, that I couldn't determine there, if he is not a forensic pathologist, how is he going to testify? Because that's all I had to do.
Any pathologist can testify, okay? You don't have to be a forensic pathologist to testify. It's just a matter of how much weight you carry, I guess, in your testimony.
Is he credible, though? That's a...
Well, the credibility is just what we have before us, you know? He's had the experiences, and I, you know, his portfolio shows how long he's been doing this work for Hidalgo, Star, Zapata Counties, you know?
One of the other problems is, and I had mentioned before, about a gross examination. He won't do a gross examination, he'll do a full autopsy. So that's costing money. The gross examination is just to, I mean, lightly determine whether there was foul play or not through the outer extremities. But if he can't do that, it's going to cost the county a lot of money because he's going to go into a full autopsy. And do we want that? And I would direct the question to Assistant DA David Gonzalez. Would he, if it been foul play, would he want him to come into the court and testify?
Well, we're waiting for him to get to the podium over here. We still have the problem, as Dr. Garcia mentioned, we need, I mean, Commissioner Garcia mentioned, of the fact that we need someone immediately. But beyond the immediate, then we can look at this.
Yeah, and that's, that's in the works. It's just a matter of now.
David?
I don't, I don't think we have much of a choice at this point. As Commissioner Garcia had pointed out...
As Commissioner Garza had pointed out, any pathologist can testify. Their certification specialties go to the weight of that testimony. I don't see any other option that we have right now for at least the next thirty days. Obviously, this is going to be a short-term fix. I hope we'll continue to work toward a regional medical examiner's office, but I think there's going to be some bumps in the road until then and right now, we just need a place to start moving the bodies.
Commissioner Garza, Commissioner-
And you can always, you can always request the services of a forensic pathologist and a gross examination when it becomes to that level. I had an email from our DA making reference to an individual out of San Antonio that does that sort of thing.
Yes.
You know, so there is that expert available if need be for those situations that might come up, Adam.
We've been lucky. At times of need and very serious crimes, we've had pathologists come to our assistance.
Excellent forensic pathologist, you know?
That's correct.
Commissioner Garza and Commissioner Pyle. The contract right now with- that I proposed for Dr. Salinas has a termination of a ten-day notice and we can shorten that if you want.
So, we can-
You know, so it's just a matter of doing what we can to make sure you're covered now and then moving on in the direction we want to go.
We had discussed this in February and we're still in the same- we're still in the same- still in the same rut. We have not moved forward any. The ninety days were up and a couple of days ago and we're still in the same place.
Well, I moved that we approved the contract with Dr. Salinas-
Thank you.
-to provide services.
Would you want me to shorten the termination notice, Commissioner? Or leave it ten days?
She's got it ten days.
With that clause, with that clause that we can-
How you have it is fine.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza to approve the contract with Dr. Salinas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salinas.
Further discussion? Just a question. Judges, do you all, do you all get our agendas emailed to you all by any chance?
Yes, sir.
You do? Because I'm just wondering, I guess I'm a little disturbed that, I think I heard somebody say this is the first that y'all had heard about this issue with the autopsies and I think we've been had- I think we've had it on the agenda almost every week for the last several months.
Nobody called and you wanted to discuss this. You wanted to hear it from me or from some other-
Well, yeah, like you said, there was no- I mean, I was just wondering if, yeah, if y'all did not, you know, get it and just, okay. So, you saw it, but just didn't realize what it was? Okay.
Well, for discussion purposes, I would like that memo that Mr. Arguello had to be, make sure that you get a copy, Pete, and that the Commissioners' Court gets a copy. And also, perhaps the JP's can have a representative, Commissioner Garza, with you and Pete and Paul and them?
Well, I think Judge, when you say that representative, aren't you?
Yeah, he is kind of like the chair of the group, you know?
Oh, okay. Well, let's make sure that- well, how can he be the chair of the group if he wasn't in on what was happening?
No, no, no. He's, well, he's the-
Oh, you mean chair of the JP?
The chair of the JP group.
Okay. I thought you were telling me he was on there.
We'll keep you informed and tomorrow morning, you'll get a memo. Actually, tonight, we'll get them back.
Why don't you just call him and have him meet with you at seven in the morning like you normally do? All right? We'll do that.
We had him sit seven this morning and at eight this morning.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you very much, judges. I appreciate you all coming by. All right, all in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
Before we send the memo, Pete?
Item ten, consideration action on project agreement between Cameron County and Cameron County Emergency Communication 911 District regarding the interoperable radio network.
Judge and Commissioners, I just, this is an agreement with 911 District and they're going to be giving the county $147,000 for some radio and tower equipment. However, their agreement has in there an arbitration clause and an indemnification and usually we strike those out, but they like to keep them in. So, I'm just informing you, you know, if we agree to the contract, we'll get the money and if we want to make changes, it may be-
Chuck, which, where is? In what page?
It's page five at the bottom. It's under indemnity. And then the arbitration clause is on page nine at the bottom as well.
Okay. We've done lots of contracts-
Right, we've been lost of them.
Is this any different?
No, I always try to get it out, but it-
But it never happens, right?
It never comes out and, you know, usually we, the money is always put to good use and it's not really an issue, but I try to bring it up just to inform the court.
Judge and Commissioners, I serve on this board. It is standard boilerplate for us. This is what we require. We're providing the money and as such, the board has somewhat the power. We have had these agreements before with the county and this is part of the stipulation. It is covered under legislation. We have a right to ask for this and it is what our attorney has drafted and I don't think it will fly without it.
All right. Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
Judge, can we go ahead and do the-
Yeah, let me do the one more consideration, the appointment of Nika Hernandez, Reserve Deputy Constable Precinct, wanting compliance with the finding that is necessary to appoint the deputy. Do I hear motion to table that item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Supplemental item, consideration, possible approval of an agreement with Elizondo Embalming Services to provide facilities for autopsies to be performed by Dr. F.P. Salinas. Dilvia?
Judge and Commissioners, this is an agreement. Dr. Salinas will perform the autopsies at this facility. So, I've done a different, separate agreement for there, for the use of the facility. They will charge for the use of the facility. They will charge if necessary, if we need to, if there's a body that needs to be put in a cooler. They will transport if requested to do so. There's charges listed for the transporting if they are asked to do that. And also, they, there's an attendant to Dr. Salinas and there's a charge for that on each autopsy. The local funeral homes are willing to transport, so I think you might want to consider what charges or find out, you know, what they're willing to charge or how they will handle that as well.
Were they willing to match the charges that this embalming service was going to do?
Some of them were, some of them I think were not real pleased about that. I think some of the funeral homes are here.
Some of them are here, I know.
I also have a question about what we just approved on Dr. Salinas's contract in item six. Is this the same as we're looking at the Elizondo where it says, "Perform the autopsy to Elizondo's Embalming Service in Mission," who have been providing service for twenty years? That $400 per autopsy, that includes one night of cooler if needed. Is Dr. Salinas saying that that $400 is going to go to Elizondo Embalming because he's going to charge $1,500 per autopsy?
He's charging $1,500 per autopsy. That's what he's charging.
Period. Well, I know, but-
Then Elizondo has got separate charges.
But in his contract that we just approved, he's saying Elizondo's going to charge us $400 and there's no way you can combine any of Elizondo's figures, the way they've got them broken down, that comes up to $400.
No, well, they put $400 because they included charges for transporting, but the contract, the way I wrote it, says, lists the charges that they would charge for transporting, for the use of the facility, for the use of the cooler, and then the attendant. But the use of the cooler and the transporting charges are optional.
But who's going to get the $400?
Nobody gets the $400. We will only pay $100 for the autopsy that's performed there at that facility and $75 for the attendant. That will be on every autopsy. Automatically, we'll have an extra $175 that will get paid to Elizondo.
But Dr. Salinas's contract says that they're going to do it for $400.
No. Well, you know what? They may be part of his proposal, but in his contract, and I'll correct that, it's not part of, it's not part of the fee. It's $1,500 that he gets to perform the autopsy.
This is a fee schedule for the embalming service?
That's from the embalming company. And in the contract with Dr. Salinas, he says that the embalming company, the same one, is going to charge us $400 and that includes one night of cooler if needed.
That's before Dilvia talked to him. That was a proposal.
What? I guess I'm wondering why we're approving $400 over here.
No, that's in his proposal and I'm going to have to go back then and just redo, talk to him and redo that. But after talking with him, I attached his proposal because it states what he will do, not realizing that he also put in there what Elizondo was going to do.
Yeah.
But I've separated those two contracts out so that you have something, you have one contract for Dr. Salinas and you have another for Elizondo that this more charge is-
We get back to the Elizondo broken down expenses, the $125 and the $150, depending on where they're coming from. They're going to send someone down here to pick them up?
If we were to ask them to do that, because if a local funeral home does not want to transport and we needed somebody to come pick them up, pick up a body, then we could ask them and do it. They would charge, that is what they would charge to come and pick up a body.
What do they charge to return it?
The same. So, it would be, if they came to pick up the body and then return it, it would be, I think, $250 for Harlingen, San Manito area, and $300 for the Brownsville, South Hydrone area.
And my question, John, was, I would rather see the local folks take the bodies up there if they're willing to do it for the same amount of money. Well, I would rather see the local folks do it also if they can do it because, one, they're already local and they're not going to be spending a lot of time on the road.
Right.
So, but let's see what's up.
Good evening, Commissioners, Judge. We're willing to work with the Commissioners, the Judge, to transport the bodies to Dr. Salinas in Hidalgo County for the fee that y'all set up. Now, the fee that y'all paying us right now is $150 for transportation to Valley Baptist. And if we use the body bag, then we, this additional $100 attached to the fee. Now, if we're going to transport our way to Hidalgo County, we're willing to work with you and help you out. There will be additional mileage added to it, which we have to transport all the way to Mission and that's about another, about an hour to get out there and an hour to get back. But we're willing to help you guys out and work with you and to work with the JP's to be a better response for us and for them. So, this case, somebody needs a real quick response here in an accident or homicide or a natural death will be, will be within thirty minutes away instead of waiting for somebody in Hidalgo County for two hours to get to the scene. So, we want to avoid less traction.
So, you're willing to work with what we've got?
We're willing to, we're willing to work with you by charging you the transportation, which is a $150, in addition to $100 for the mileage going to Hidalgo County and coming back. So, right now, you're paying $150 to the local funeral homes. If you pay us another additional $100, they'll be, I mean, we'll be, we'll be okay with that. Yeah.
What do y'all currently charge right now for transporting a body? I know you've told me, but just give it to me in a lump sum. Right now, what are your current charges?
We charge, when the JP orders an autopsy, we bill the county for $150, the transportation of the body to Valley Baptist.
But that's normally a one-way transportation.
One-way transportation, yes, sir.
And here, what Elizondo's talking about is a two-way transportation, which ends up adding up to be more than what you're talking about transporting them up there.
Yes, sir.
Because you charge $150 for taking and bringing them back?
We charge $150 for taking them to Valley Baptist.
And how about getting them back to your funeral home?
Once they're at Valley Baptist, once the families are notified by the public officials, I'm sorry, or by police officers or let them know that they lost a loved one, and at that time, they'll make a determination which funeral home they want to select. And then the select funeral home will call Valley Baptist to let them know that they're going to be the ones making arrangements to do the funeral. And at that time, that the funeral homes, once they pick up the body at Valley Baptist, that transport charge is charged to the family.
Okay, so it's not to the county? It wouldn't be to the county?
No, sir.
The return trip's to the family.
Yeah, in this way, it would be each way. So, it'd be like paying double?
Double.
Yeah.
Hello? Can I ask? Go ahead. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Freddy Elizondo, owner of Trinity Funeral Home in Harlingen. And the way it works is that we go pick up the body and let's say the fam- it's in the street, it's in a car wreck, and we take it to the hospital. If this body is from San Manito, Brownsville, they want to use the funeral home from over there, then we would charge the county. But if they use us, then we don't, you know, it's included in our professional services. So, we don't charge the county at all. That's the way it works. But the idea is that if you're going to wait, somebody dies in Brownsville, you're going to wait for somebody to come from Mission, isn't the body there in the street, you know?
Two hours, you've got people tied up, streets tied up. You've got people tied up waiting for two hours.
Yeah, uh-huh. You've got your policemen, emergency crews, and holding up the traffic if it's an expressway. You know, it's just not logical. You know, it's not logical, you know? So, that's what we're here, you know, to represent. We're willing to do it. I'm willing to do the Harlingen and I know Rudy Garza probably will help also and he'll work the San Manito, the Honda. There's a Trivino Funeral Home, Garza Memorial was here and-
Oscar, Oscar Trivino from Garza Memorial, he's here also.
Good evening. I'd like to bring up some other issues that have never been considered by the people that put together the numbers and what they pay the funeral homes for the work they do. We get tied up into these calls, could be three hours. They want us there immediately and then when we get there, they won't let us touch anything until this thorough investigation is done. We're tied up there for three hours and then we've got transportation issues. When it's been Valley Baptist, you get there and you have to be waiting thirty to forty-five minutes for a security guard to come and open up and receive the body and sign it in and then the unloading. The amount of time involved, we're talking about four hours. Now, the county has been paying us $150 when, you know, a reasonable charge for a first call is, that's what we call removal, is $250. And that's, and that is low. Other funeral homes are charging as high as $795, $395. We've been doing it for $150 and we haven't really complained. But look at this. They'll send us out to Boca Chica Beach, twenty miles out that way, to make one of these calls and then we're going to be tied up over there at the scene for quite a while. We've got the transportation from Boca Chica up to Harlingen. See, it's not fair to pay us the same amount like a fixed amount. It should be based on the amount of mileage and the work that we do and, you know, how long they tie us up.
Well, the only, Mr. Trivino, the only reason this has come up is because in the proposal that we got from Elizondo Embalming Services, they are the ones that gave us what their-
Those figures.
The figures to transport the bodies to their place of autopsy performing and back, you know, I mean, it's not-
Right. And I'm, you know, bringing out a point, okay, that what you really are having us do or what you'd have them doing. And if they're, you know, they're willing to do it for this fee, they're really being quite reasonable compared to what, you know, one would really see what is tied up because we tie up a funeral director. Funeral director needs to go with an assistant. It's a two-person call. Now, the issue that concerns me more than anything is going, the distances that we're talking about. If we're going to be doing it, the $150 would have to be raised to a more reasonable $250. For Brownsville, it's different for Harlingen. It was different for Harlingen before because they went to Valley Baptist, which was in their city. We had to travel twenty-six miles. And this is one, just one consideration that I want you all to have when you're putting together, because this is going to be coming up further in the future. See, when you hire a plumber to come over here, he doesn't give you a cut rate because, you know, he operates in the county and that's the way they've made the funeral homes feel, that, you know, we operate in the county and we owe the county, you know, our services because, you know, we're part of the county, but we, you know, we should be treated just like you would treat any other contracting and any other individual that you contract because basically, that's what you're doing. Why should we be paid so much less? And I want you to take that into consideration and I do want to state that, you know, for Brownsville to take someone to Hidalgo County or Edinburgh, it should not be the $150, that 150, that we would be willing to do it for the 250. That's what Elizondo would charge, but I just wanna make that point.
Mr. ...
That feels fair.
Oscar, I mean, Mr. Elizondo behind you, are you related to this Elizondo embalmer?
No, no.
Not related?
No, no.
I guess, my question is...
It's your last name.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think you, I mean, I think you have some very valid points, however, how can, their, their trip is two ways, 'cause they've gotta come from Idalgo County here to pick up and then go back. Same thing with you, you have to t- transport from here to over there and then come back, so really, that's the same thing. You're still doing, you're still a round trip whether with body or without body, right? Okay. How is it that they can afford to do it for 150 from Brownsville, South Padres Presnos, back to Idalgo, or 125 from Harlingen, San Manito? Why is it that they can do it?
They're just an embalming service, they have a lot lower, lower overhead than we do. We're a full-fledged funeral home.
Well, no, I understand that, but, I mean, but apparently, are you think, are they making it up someplace else, somewhere, you think, or what?
Probably making up on the storage and, uh, the storage, because at Valley Baptist, they don't charge anything for storage, and he's gonna charge every day storage, he's probably gonna make it up on that, you know? But also, because of dollars overhead, you know, there's a lot... You can't compare a funeral home, a full-fledged funeral home to an embalming service. All they do is embalm bodies, they're just, you know...
Right.
And pick up bodies.
Well, and I think, I think that's the difficulty that I'm having, and they were just comparing apples to oranges here. I mean, y'all are a, you know, a one-stop shop, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, and they're not. I mean, they, from there, they, I guess they have to take...
They can do a lot less than we can, I mean, they do things...
So it's a little bit different, so it's really, you really can't compare what they're charging to what you're charging.
Right, and usually, like on calls, like around the, I know, I can talk for the Harlingen area, they want us there pretty quick. They want the, they wanna get the, their bodies removed and...
So what you're saying is that you, you don't have a problem with providing the transportation from anywhere in Cameron County to Idalgo County, right? You're, you're...
I say, uh, just from the, I'm from, just talking for Harlingen area.
Well, but let's, let's, let's talk about everybody, okay? Uh, but, but, but your concern more is that the, the 150 that, that you're being asked to, to charge is, is, is not enough in order to do that?
That's true. That's correct, sure, correct.
All right.
But have we gotten a number for what you think is enough? Or did I miss it? If you say that that amount is not enough, did, did you give us a figure of what you think is enough, or did I miss that?
Yeah, I think 53. I think the figure y'all proposed, uh, 250 would be, uh, enough for us to do the transportation.
Well, a few minutes ago, you wanted to do it for the same price, Judge.
Well, you're talking about one way, additional to one way and coming back the other way, which is 250. Yep.
And how do we justify to our taxpayers, you being one of them, that they're willing to do it for 250 round trip, and you're willing to do it for 500, and we need to use you just a time involved?
It's both, sir, just a one-way, 250.
One-way trip.
One-way.
What's that?
One-way trip.
250 total?
It's to be a one-way, sir, 250 total.
One-way, right?
Family pays for coming back.
We can go and come back for, for, we'll go and come back for 250, sir.
Yeah, but, you know, you go and you drop the body off, it gets, perform the autopsy, then you gotta go pick it up.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So it would be 250 to take it?
Time?
250 total, total 250.
For the complete...
For the complete transportation...
For the complete transportation.
For going to Elizondo, coming back, and then going back again the following day.
Well, that'd be the same as this.
Yeah, so, we're willing to, to work with you.
We're gonna work with you guys.
Yeah, work with y'all, like I said. Uh, if they charge you 250, we're, we're willing to, uh, help you guys out and, you know...
Well, we appreciate that, then. We can strike that from the contract?
And plus, it's, it's, and, and it, uh, we're willing to work, it, with the JPs...
It's not in?
No, from the contract with Elizondo.
Oh, okay.
Strike those two out from the contract with Elizondo, the transporting part. Is that okay?
Oh, Brownsville?
Uh...
There's never a time to delay.
Yeah, I guess we can leave it in there in case nobody can do it. Okay.
But continue to do the rotation calls on our funeral homes, just the one we do as a regular person.
Is that a motion?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, what?
Yes.
I move that we approve the contract and use the rotation...
We have a motion by Commissioner Wood to do that, okay?
Continue to use rotation on our funeral homes in the county that normally services.
Yeah.
The rotation basis that y'all are on of being called by...
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, we're gonna continue to use that.
Okay.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, under our salary schedules. I've had it been up three times already, right?
Uh, there was an additional sheet that I left, uh, in front of you in reference to the Treasurer's Office line item transfer, uh, for some supplies that they need for their office. Um, the, the others are line item transfers. The second one on the first page, I believe you received a memo from the District Clerk's Office, um, in relation to, uh, the status of their operations and the collections, and the funding, uh, that they were needing, uh, to expand the operations in this, uh, San Manito Annex for additional services that they're gonna be providing there. Uh, this actually, uh, takes care of that, puts the additional monies and supplies, uh, in communications, and allows for them to purchase, uh, some equipment that they'll need to, in order to do passports and research, uh, there in San Manito, so people don't have to come to Brownsville. Uh, and the Auditor's Office is, uh, certified the additional revenues that go along with that. Um, the rest are just line item transfers, other than the last one, which is, uh, the DA's Office, uh, the drug forfeiture, and it's cleaning up some of the line items, and also, uh, some increased funding that they are requesting, uh, for travel, education, and training, um, and, uh, accounting for some of the adjustments that they had made to salary schedules in the past.
A question...
Go ahead.
A question on the, is David here?
He's took off.
A question on the DA's budget. Um, they've actually received an additional $432,000 in drug forfeiture monies?
In excess of that, actually.
In excess of that, okay. And then, when they got that, they're increasing salaries and everything with that, or what?
No, uh, actually, on, on some of these, um, there was, um, adjustments that had been done in the past, um, and there were some increases to some, to some slots and reductions in other slots, um, and, and the budget amendments that they had forwarded to me, uh, it was to, to hit fund balance and hit fund balance, but there was additional revenues that were coming in, and...
But who's, who's fund balance?
Theirs.
Okay.
The drug forfeiture fund balance.
All right.
Uh, so I hadn't processed them all, uh, until this point, they had sent me some additional ones, uh, and so I just went back and, and was cleaning up these line items, uh, for the adjustments that had already been approved, and, and accounting for it with the additional revenues that they have received.
All right.
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 24, approval of county claims. Do I hear motion for approval?
Can you take it?
Move by Commissioner Tam- uh, Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, I mean, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
I have an abstention.
Yeah, please note Commissioner Gatsa's abstention, and...
00183768, warrant number.
And please note mine 183736 payable to Harlingen Water Works. Item 25, consideration approval of interlocal agreement between Cameron County and the City of Brownsville for the FM 511 project. Pete?
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, about a month ago, um, I was contacted by Texas Department of Transportation, uh, as you all know, TechDOT has a project, um, on FM 511 between Highway 48 and the expressway. Um, it's a $46 million expansion project, um, that they're working on, and, um, the purpose of our meeting was to advise the county that there were 31 parcels, drainage easements that needed to be acquired as part of that project. Um, after reviewing the map that they left, um, I saw that 30 of the 31 parcels were actually inside city limits of Brownsville, uh, and not in the Cameron County jurisdiction. Um, the, the, um, so then I contacted the City of Brownsville, um, and I estimated more or less the value of the 31 parcels, um, and our estimate is about $600,000, so I advised the city of that, and they requested assistance from the county, that, that's a major, um, expenditure for the city. Um, that is not considered on system drainage easements for TechDOT, so that money is not gonna be able to be reimbursed back to the city or the county. Um, in addition to that, we've met with the Port of Brownsville a couple of times, because at least, um, a third of the parcels or a third of the acreage that needs to be acquired for the drainage easements, um, are from the, uh, Brownsville Navigation District. And so, we're talking to the port about the possibility of them donating, uh, those drainage easements. Um, and so when we took, we looked at the $600,000 figure, um, you know, if, if the port would donate that, you know, that would probably equal to about $200,000, and then split the difference between the city and the county. Um, we've estimated, um, if, if none of the parcels are donated, then we're estimating, um, the cost of the appraisals, review appraisals and title commitments to be about $100,000. Um, if they are donated, then that cost probably, you know, comes down to about, uh, 60, you know, $70,000. Um, the City of Brownsville is willing to, uh, put up, um, that funding. The county's, um, portion, aside from the $200,000, would be, um, the actual acquisition of the drainage easements for the project. Now, we really didn't have a lot of time because, um, TechDOT advises that their letting schedule is September of '07, and they wanna be under construction, uh, by November of this year. So we really do not have a, a lot of time, it's, it's really a tight, tight schedule, um, and, and I'm not, you know, so sure that we're gonna be able to meet that schedule, but we're gonna do everything we can, um, to, to try and, and meet that deadline. Really don't want to, uh, delay the letting of the project and, and maybe, uh, cost some of that funding to, um, to be allocated elsewhere. Uh, this is also being, uh, it's on the, the City Commission agenda for tonight at the City of Brownsville, um, and, and that is what we're proposing. Our funding, uh, would come from Project Roadmap, um, if, if the court decides to move forward.
So the county's, uh, I'm looking at number five, so that's the total?
Yes, plus our, plus the county would be, um, the one doing the actual acquisition of the drainage easements. That, that's an in-kind contribution.
And where are we getting this money?
Project Roadmap.
What about?
I move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 26, consideration approval of construction and maintenance agreement between Cameron County and the Texas Department of Transportation for FM 511 drainage outfall improvements and approval of resolution authorizing the execution of that agreement. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, uh, by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 29, consideration authorization for a report from Red River Service Corporation regarding the status of garbage and brush pickup schedule, DAG.
I had a...
I think, did you wanna table this?
Yeah, we, we are gonna, I'm gonna ask that we table this. The Red River people who my office and myself have not been able to get in contact with for a while, as far as calls being returned, uh, did call yesterday and said they could not be here today, and I asked to table the item till next week and allow them an opportunity to come before us, but I, I, I do wanna tell you that we have gotten an inordinate amount of calls on Red River Service, on missed schedules, on, uh, brush pickup, on, you know, uh, this morning, we got calls, we got about six calls this morning in, whereby people have been missed twice in the last two weeks. They have not had their garbage picked up. And, you know, I just wanna make sure that, that if we're gonna provide this service, that we hold these guys accountable to making sure they're doing what the contract says they're gonna do. And I know they've got some issues and they're trying to improve their service, but, uh, we gotta do something to prod them along, you know?
All right, so I hear a motion to table till the next meeting, which may not be next week, but...
I'll move.
Whatever the next meeting at. Uh, move by Commissioner Gatsa, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 30, discussion on Health Services District.
And please advise us of the meeting schedule so that we can accommodate them...
It'll be week after next.
Okay, so next week, no meeting?
That's correct.
Judge, Commissioners, I would ask that you would, um, please table item 30.
Move to table. Table.
Move by Commissioner, uh, Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye to table. For how long, Dill?
For the next meeting.
All right. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 31, consideration authorization to notify Mutual of Omaha Insurance Company pursuant to paragraph 21.1 of the existing administrative service agreement to administer runout claims for 180 days after termination of the administrative service agreement.
Uh, Dill, Dill?
Uh, oh, my lord.
No, uh, Richard, uh, in, uh, in response to Mr. Welty's, uh, request, put this item on the agenda, because we are at the end of the contract with Mutual of Omaha. Of course, we also have some runoff claims that need to be addressed, and, and for how long, and so Mr. Welty will, will give us that, that information and his recommendations.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ken Welty, I'm the independent consultant for the project for the Group Health Insurance, RFP. Uh, what we have in this letter of June 25th is Mutual of Omaha reciting that the contract's gonna be terminated, uh, for the administration services on September 1. The stop-loss insurance contract will be terminated on September 1, 2007, and then there's another agreement for health screening and support services that'll be terminated September 1, 2007. Within that administrative services agreement, there's a provision for Mutual of Omaha to pay the runoff claims. These will be the claims that were incurred prior to the date of termination. Mutual of Omaha has records set up for these, and in that agreement, uh, they will, in the letter, the schedule that accompanied the letter, they will agree to pay the runoff claims for 12 months. In that original agreement, it stated 180 days, but they have modified that to be a full 12 months. Well, that, what that allows is to clean out any claims that were incurred prior to the date of termination. It will allow the runoff claims for our stop-loss insurance contract that has an additional three-month period to be paid during that, uh, time period. And then it'll also coincide with your benefit booklet that allows for 12 months for submission of a claim. So I think it makes a lot of sense to accept their offer to, uh, pay the runoff claims for the 12 months on the basis of fees for a three-month period that have been adjusted to remove items that are not associated with, directly with the payment of claims. And that amount, that reduction is about $9 per employee per month. It's about a 28% reduction. Uh, so, the cost would be, on the... seven, and then there's another agreement for health screening and support services that'll be terminated September one, two thousand seven. Within that administrative services agreement, there's a provision for Mutual of Omaha to pay the runoff claims. These will be the claims that were incurred prior to the date of termination. Mutual of Omaha has records set up for these, and in that agreement, they will, in the letter, the schedule that accompanied the letter, they will agree to pay the runoff claims for twelve months. In that original agreement, it stated a hundred and eighty days, but they have modified that to be a full twelve months. Well, that, what that allows is to clean out any claims that were incurred prior to the date of termination. It will allow the runoff claims for our stop-loss insurance contract that has an additional three-month period to be paid during that, uh, time period. And then it'll also coincide with your benefit booklet that allows for twelve months for submission of a claim. So I think it makes a lot of sense to accept their offer to, uh, pay the runoff claims for the twelve months on the basis of fees for a three-month period that have been adjusted to remove items that are not associated with, directly with the payment of claims. And that amount, that reduction is about nine dollars per employee per month. It's about a twenty-eight percent reduction. Uh, so the cost would be, on the basis of your current enrollment, would be about a hundred and twen- a hundred and nineteen thousand, six eighty-one. Your new insurance company, new administrator, will not have to pay these running claims, so they will have less of a workload in that first twelve-month period. And there's a strong possibility that we will see some reduction in their fees in that first year that might have, uh, come up close to what we have here. So, in, in my mind, this makes a lot of sense to accept their offer.
What if we end up, we've gone out for RFPs? What if we end up with Mutual of Omaha? Is this a moot question at that time?
Uh, repeat that question, please.
What if we end up with Mutual of Omaha again renewing? Is this a moot question?
Oh, uh, well, Mutual of Omaha, as I stated in this letter, is exiting the insurance market, so they will not-
They won't be there.
Be a player in the RFP process. And, and that's part of what prompted this, this letter.
Is Coventry Healthcare gonna stay in the market?
Uh, Coventry Healthcare, uh, to the best of my knowledge, uh, is, will not be a player in this market. Uh, we've kept careful tabs of who is responding to the RFP, and they have not been accompanying at this point.
Dill, do you have? This agreement is okay as far as the legalities are concerned?
I did not deem this one. It was Richard that did this one, Commissioner.
Did he tell you it was okay?
Um, he has worked with Mrs., Mr. Wealthy, and from what I understand, um, he is okay with this.
So that's his signature on the, on that? Is that his signature?
Yes, ma'am.
If Mutual of Omaha is selling to Coventry, is Coventry going to be the one doing the runout, or is-